Good evening, welcome to the study session of April eighth. Donna, we do a roll call, please.
No. Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Sjarns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sap.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. I think we'll wait till Jay's ready for us.
Give me just one moment here.
When I talked to him yesterday, you could barely hear it, so it's much better today. Wait for Jay Mark. Do you have anything for us for tonight?
No, I don't have anything to add. It looks like we might have a. Delayed agenda for next week. I'll try to brief you all on a additional contract with Aspect Consulting for the C Street landfill. We have some additional testing. I can tell you what it is, but it's PFAS. It's too long to pronounce, but we have to do additional testing for PFAS. Up there, the ecology is required, so.
That was closed and done deal.
Well, we still have to monitor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we still have to do the monitoring, required monitoring. And Aspect is helping that monitoring for us. So, and we have a couple of years of grant money to pay for that. Apply for the grant or. None of them, so, but we'll have that, that it won't happen in your agenda, but I'll have some.
Have some additional information through briefing tonight, all of you.
You showed up today and apologized, been late. I know, but kind of the timeline and we're under a college's timeline, so.
No, I have an apology. I've dealt with it myself. Their timeline is the only timeline that matters, apparently, so.
No.
Councilor, I'm remaining, it says.
Yeah, about what?
Question for Mark, what other.
Please.
What does a college do?
Um, there's little, well, there is. I don't know a whole lot about them. There are some resources that I do know, I do know of. The problem is you can't. You can't penetrate the cap, if you will. So you've got, if you will, look at it like a cake.
That's.
So there's a layer, right? You got the bottom layer that.
Cake, you got frosting on top, which is in perimeral service, right? So usually clay or sometimes the membrane.
And so you can't penetrate that because that allows rainwater or surface water to penetrate through. You know, the landfill portion and then start maybe potentially mitigating offsite, so. See, and then also that continues to decompose and break down, so you have some settling within the landfills, so it's difficult to build anything on those. I've seen some recreational uses. I've seen like kind of a dog park or things like that, or BMX track or things like that, so. We certainly need to have some authority through ecology to, for any type of use that would be used on top of that, though.
Like, dog park, we're getting a dog park?
Yeah.
And also, yeah, it's like, we want to have like operate stuff where the kids can be. So, exactly what? Yeah, I was thinking about, be up there and something, other facilities of that.
That'd be a great subject for the next post plant, as well as we, as public starts weighing in on what their priorities might be, whether it's BMX track or. Another dog park or larger, certainly that'd be, be year round and all leather surface and larger, so you know, small, big dogs separate.
All those types of.
Facilities, yeah, that's, that's part of the. And it would be great to hear more from the public on what their priorities may be. Yeah, absolutely. Let's engage those, uh, those volunteers and the two to help us out to determine what it's gonna be. Yeah, you all set? Terrific.
Alright, so tonight to me, economic development director Jay Hill has an update for us on about the con plan, which we just left the meeting room.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I apologize if you need me to repeat myself, I have the toddler plague, so. Doing the best I can. So, share my screen. So, we have been hard at work over the last couple of months, having our weekly. Steering committee meetings for comprehensive plan update. What we have to have done is principal draft, now we can play the largest design. So, if you remember originally, we were supposed to have this adopted by June the third of twenty twenty five. The state legislature granted us a six month extension. I granted everybody a six month extension because. All of the consultants that are doing this work are heavily overworked because there's, there's only a couple of folks that have to do this, that do this work, but there's a lot of people needing their services. And so even the consultant's ability to deliver the projects is pretty overtaxed. The legislature recognized this and also. We are, I dare say, the guinea pig for a bunch of new legislation that has passed in the interim, related to middle housing. Permanent streamlining, a couple of other issues that we have to incorporate through our con plan as well. So, we got this extra six month extension in kind of recognition of that. We've been a little bit behind, just again, as I mentioned, consultants are. Pretty overworked right now. All of them are across the board. Every, every city I've talked to is in sadly kind of the same kind of position where we're all just like, you know, a couple of months away from the principal draft. So going, are we gonna make it? But I think we'll be, I think we'll be fine. We have a plan to get forward and get through this, and so I'm sharing it with you right now. We have until December thirty first to have it adopted. We've given ourselves about four to eleven room at the end, and there's some other issues that need to be worked out, but essentially what's going to happen is. We have our, what we're gonna call principal draft. It's kind of like a, not a, not a draft, but not a final draft. It's mostly complete. Two honors around June, that's for invoicing purposes. And we have that grant from them. Uh, that's reimbursable, and so we have to have the work product complete in order to get the reversible grant. And they're willing to reimburse us not for a final draft, but for in fact a principal draft and then in recognition of this extension, because otherwise. We have six months extra to do the work, but you don't have the money from the commerce department to actually do the work without, without them kind of reevaluating. So where that leaves us is we have, like I said, every month, we're having two meetings of the steering committee. We've been tackling different chapters, so. We just had. This week, talking about utilities, in previous weeks, we've done capital facilities, parks and rag causing. Uh, land use, we're gonna come back on land use here again, coming up with some of the initial recommendations from the committee. And then we're just gonna burn through. There'll be some cooperation with Mason County on urban growth area planning and policies that are reflected on annual planning policies. There's a transportation plan that is running concurrently with all of this, and then that transportation plan is going to feed some things into the transportation element. There is the climate plan, which is our, you know, we're, we're doing it as our hazard resilience element, but that's also gonna feed back into this. So magically, at the end, we're gonna end up with this amazing layer cake and we have full faith and confidence that we'll be able to deliver. The full draft, so we have since preliminary drafts to commerce, the, the full kind of pretty much complete drafts. Uh, from the committee will be available. Um, by the end of July. The intent is that in August, we have two work sessions with the city council, so all of the steering committee. All of the city council and the mayor and the council of good years both sit on both. So everybody will be sitting at the same table and. Discussions over a couple of pretty critical chapters. Land use, transportation, the housing, and the first one, and then everything else at the end. Just making sure everybody kind of understands what is changing, what were we required to change by state law, what is, um. What are we changing because, you know, this is community vision and so on and so on. Um, and so we'll have these two work sessions. We'll have an opportunity to make a couple of minor tweaks, but. Uh, actually, this is incorrect. I should say nineteen with nine sixteen, we'll have the introductory resolutions. It's called the notice of intent. Um, so by that point, we'll have read everything that's in it. We'll have some agreement. We'll have made the last minute edits. This is generally what's going to be adopted by the city. After nine sixteen, it goes to commerce for sixty days, like everything, they get their chance to look at it. We will hear. This is a place where they actually do put a lot of time and resources on. Did you comply with these mandatory elements? Did you comply with, you know, all of the provisions of HB eleven eighty one and middle housing stuff? Did you comply with the new changes to climate mitigation, greenhouse gas emissions, vehicle miles traveled? Most of which we don't have to actually do, but they're gonna look for some of these things anyway. Um, and so they get their sixty day review and we'll hopefully hear from them well before the sixty days is over and then. Right now, we're scheduling this for adoption November eighteenth by council, so it moves really fast. It's like, oh, November, that's like seven months away, but. When you start looking at this schedule, it goes really quick. That gives us a little bit of flexibility for a few more meetings in case there are substantive, substantive changes from commerce, like if they're like, hey, you guys really got to sit down on the street and change something. Or if in the interim period between the resolutions, you know, you're like, wait, you know, we need to go back and fix something. Prefer we not do it after the resolutions thing. And I'm just saying, there's, there's a little bit of flex that we might be able to go into December. Um, we typically don't have a council meeting around Christmas time, and we typically have budgets usually the early part of December. So that's why we try to avoid getting into December with this schedule, but be advised if there's any more delays or. And so we're gonna try to keep your holidays cheery and bright, but it just might be a work it up. So, I just kind of wanted to give you guys the timeline and let you know that, you know, we're, we're cranking as hard as we can right now. There is going to be this opportunity for joint conversation. It's not like we're just gonna bring it to you and say, alright, adopt it, you know, that's, that's not the intent of the plan. Um, so it's joined, series of joint workshops in August and then opportunities to comment and whatnot at that time. So, with that. Any questions about timelines specifically, then I can kind of update you on kind of like what the future growth scenario could look like for Sheldon? Okay, thank you. So moving on to. We're calling, this is just the draft table of alternatives. We're working, what I didn't include in that timeline is we have to do an environmental impact statement for the whole thing as well. So there has to be review of all of the traffic and water, wastewater, school services, um. Yeah, economic impacts, things like that of our development scenarios. And so what we're. What we're required to analyze is there has to be the no action alternative. What if we don't do anything? What if we just left everything exactly the way it's, which. It's kind of a misnomer because we really can't, because the state told us we had to do a bunch of stuff, but we have to evaluate what's, what's the baseline condition? If we didn't change anything, what happens? And so that baseline condition is. Um, based on the most recent housing needs assessment and growth trends from SCS Group and a couple of other things that we've done. We will see growth of five thousand five hundred and eighty, sorry, five thousand eight hundred fifty people. Uh, within the next twenty years, that's an increase of two thousand two hundred and seventy housing units. Now. That is agnostic of whatever happens with the national economy, if there's a recession, if there's tariffs, if there's a slowdown in the building market, there's an increase in the building market. This is just based on our best current available knowledge. Um, alternative one, which is. Our projected forecast as a result of the work that we've been doing. Um, is this increase of seven thousand four hundred and one people and increase of two thousand seven hundred and twenty two. So that is what we're being asked to plan for under. The, the actual projections based on all the changes to state law, right? So not just baseline, but where do we go for baseline? So that's this. The big change is going to be looking at, or sorry, the difference between these two alternatives is looking at. Within our existing capacity, so kind of the infilling throughout the community. We're not really focusing on growth anywhere. Let an apartment complex pop up over here, hope that a, you know, single family home, you know, that comes down, gets turned into a fourplex or something, but. It, it's just kind of sporadic scattered growth, which is a little bit more. We'll say like organic, like if we don't make, make these changes. We are proposing, however, some big changes, and that's the inclusion of. What we're calling these residential target areas, which is going to feed into some of the discussion that we're having tonight about the MFT. Now, I want to preface this that we're not, we're not, I'm with these analyses about the residential targeted areas. I'm not presupposing if you're going to adopt the MFT. Still have a residential targeted area without an MFTD ordinance, but by having a residential targeted area in our comprehensive plan. When we adopt the MFTD ordinance or vice versa, it just reinforces it. And there's specific terminology. In the MFTD ordinance that we'll talk about later tonight, that, that will mention this residential target areas. But the, the idea is we concentrate growth kind of around the wall as the one interchange on both sides of the highway and moving down a little bit to about K Street. So that whole kind of area between the schools, Walmart, all the way across the highway into the hall equity property, that is where we see. Apartments, density, growth, and we try to keep a lot of the impacts out of the single family, because we're not, you know, putting big apartment blocks, right? In the fall of an existing neighborhood with, you know, the concerns from the neighbors and traffic. We're trying to focus that in one area. We can mitigate it better if it's all concentrated. We can provide better transit services, provide better connections between employment in residence, schools, things like that, if it seems more co-located. Um, so that's. Alternative two is these residential target areas. We want to focus about fifty percent of our growth. Um, you know, these required housing units, and again, housing units is single family, multi-family. Different forms of attached living, even there's some requirements that we don't have to plan for, kind of more like the secret occupancy and assistance with the kinds of. So there's, there's other additional things beyond what the traditional housing unit that we have to plan for. So all of that said, the questions that are gonna come forward at the time of adoption are going to be. You want it spread out throughout the community and not really like focus it in one particular area. There's a benefit to that, but there's also some drawbacks to that, and it depends on, and the EIS will tell us. Exactly what those are, right? Like they'll look at dispersed growth and say. You're gonna clog a bunch of streets. People aren't gonna be able to get to where they need to go, or vice versa. They might say, your existing street map work. Wide and expansive and it's near perfect grid in most places. You can do distributed growth and that's fine, right? And so we might, we might hear some different answers about that. The residential targeted areas might say. Yeah, it's a great idea to put everything together, or it might say, no, this fails all of your intersections without massive infrastructure upgrades and. Don't only want targeted growth in RTAs, and so. The answer, like, I don't know yet. We're still crafting the land use formulations. We're still, you know, working with the steering committee. We're still working with our consultants. We're having regular staff meetings. Regular interface with Mason County is a long, like iterative process where like we get some information and then take that back and put it into a couple of other plans, then we kind of shift it forward and then. Do that again, and it's, it's very chicken and egg, and eventually we get to a point where we say, okay, what, what does this do for the environment? That's where we'll, we'll be able to, you know, at the time. That you announce your intent to adopt, pick a preferred alternative, and so that will be either one, dispersed growth, or two, which is the more concentrated growth. And so those will be the questions that are brought forth to you guys, and that's the, the main decision that really comes out of, you know, what is the city's preferred alternative? You'll hear the word preferred alternative moving forward with the final adopted plan. Um, and, and with that, I mean, there will be lots of opportunities. You're not. That's the, the main question is what is the city's preferred alternative growth, but throughout the process, you know, once we start delivering your jobs to review. Um, I mean, the whole burrito is yours to, you guys can take a look at it and say, you know, I, I, I wanna, you know, focus more on this. I want to add something. Why didn't we look at this, et cetera, et cetera. Steering committee and the staff are doing a great job putting stuff together right now, but, you know, there's multiple layers of reason, and that's, this is a really important document. This is how we get our grant funding. This is how we make our land use patterns, and some of the land use patterns that you see in the city were, you know. Done either hypothetically or done by a plan fifty years ago, and they're still here. It's hard once the building's in the ground, but it's really go away very quickly, so. Um, you know, we just want to be very thoughtful about it, and we're doing the best that we can. We know that when it comes time for you guys, you guys are gonna, you know, be given the same opportunity and, and, you know. Uh, hopefully, um, to the conclusion that you feel best represents what the, the vibe for the community, so.
A developer still has to make the improvements if we're gonna build a, a large, large. Area, they still have to upgrade lights and roads and all that stuff.
Standards remain same.
Yeah, so we wouldn't, so it doesn't really matter if we decide this side of town or that side of town. They still have to make those improvements. So.
To an extent.
Why would we say where they could build if they're gonna make them anyway? If they're gonna improve.
Well, it, it also becomes a question of how difficult is it for them to mitigate their impact? So, I'm just gonna say like, uh, over by Calend Park, somebody builds a, a huge, you know, five hundred apartment complex on its property there. I'm making something of this. This is not in the pipeline. It's just very quickly, I don't want this in the paper. This is not happening, but I'm just saying, let's, let's assume for a scenario real quick. Five hundred apartments, right? How do they get out to Olympic Highway? Where do they go from there? What needs to happen along that stretch? Is there the existing water source? By the time you start mitigating for all of those impacts in a place where it already hasn't been pre-planned for that, it's very, very, very expensive to try to. Because our traffic analysis will sit there, it'll evaluate each intersection, and they have to mitigate until the intersections stop failing. And if they're just dumping something in a place that's not already ready for it, it will collapse the traffic system until they mitigate it, and then those mitigation measures. Becomes so predominantly expensive that it might kill the growth, and so. We want to be very careful about where things are gonna go from that exact perspective. We want to make sure that. We are planning ahead for it by doing our things, but yes, they also have to do it. So we want to like come to a really nice place in the middle where. It's not too expensive for them to do it. Already have the foresight to put it in the right place. We've already had the foresight to make our own improvements that their improvements help them. So.
And public expectation, right? Some reasonable expectation, this kind of develop can happen in these types of areas rather than. Not knowing at all, right? And then what happens at that point? Legislative body gets the public coming back to them, saying, why didn't you inform me that this might be a possible, possibility down the road?
And.
Right, well, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, as part of either scenario, we're looking at zoning certain portions of the city, multi-family, and that's going to be. You know, it's, it's a political question, more than, I mean, the land use says, do it, it's important, we need apartments, we don't have enough. Um, but a lot of people are gonna say, you know, I want that in my backyard. I don't want those people living next to me. I mean, we hear it, even single family subdivision, we hear it. You know, and so, um, the, the where it happens is an important question that you guys will be asked to kind of review and make sure that we did our homework appropriately on as well. You know, did we make the right decisions? Most of the places that we're planning zoning multi-family on the map are either currently undeveloped and there's nobody nearby. Or they're already multi-family, we're adjacent to multi-family, and there's, there's very few places where we just went like. We're just gonna throw an apartment complex over here. It's like, there's a reason for it. There's already one there, or there's space for more on the same property. Part of the problem is right now, our current zoning, and I know I've mentioned this before, but our, our current zoning allows for like an apartment complex, but only if you go through the PUD process, which involves public hearings, which involves a whole bunch of. Um, legislative and bureaucratic work that a lot of developers just wouldn't deal with. They're just, you know, they, they would take one look at. I had to go through three public hearings and I don't want to deal with the neighbors. I don't want, you know, there's too much uncertainty for developers. Certainty is time and time is money, and so. We need to have a little bit more diversity of our. Housing types and our, our zoning types in order to allow developers to say, okay, this, this, I can do town most carefully, I'm gonna do town. So I'm gonna do apartments over here because I can do apartments. We just need to give them that certainty that they can look at that and say. Okay, I know what I'm getting myself into instead of, I just bought this and I can't do what my profile said, and I'm just gonna leave it vacant for the next thirty years, because that's not what we're right now. So. Um, so, this table that was provided, it doesn't have a lot of detail right now, uh, because we don't, again, this is just an internal discussion. Um, there, we don't know about UGA changes. Uh, right now, we're gonna be working with the county to look at places where we do a little impact, get a few places, and we expand on some others. There are some existing neighborhoods that don't really want to be annexed that are in the UGA, if they're part of it. Um, there are places just outside of UGA that want to become part of our city, and we're already providing municipal services even outside of the urban growth area. So why don't we, like, take people that want it. Ask by the people to dump now, and that becomes complicated because there's a few places where there's water, quality impacts and water provision, utility provision issues, things like that. So we, again, may have to be very surgical about it, and at the end of the day, commerce and ecology are gonna look at it and rub their hands, see what happens. So, um. Yes, I've just kind of like, we're dumped on you guys for a few minutes, but I just kind of wanted to give you the heads up on everything that's coming forward and kind of the, you know, the, the expectations and requests and everything for the. Next seven months of everybody's lives, so I have to answer any, any at all questions to best my ability right now. And for however long my voice.
Questions for Jay.
And con plans every five years?
Eight years.
Oh, that's twenty year plan.
We plan for twenty years of growth. Um, but it's, it kind of leapfarts, right? So you're like, plan for twenty years, and then, you know, a few years from now, we get the chance to say, well, yeah, we're on track, now we're not on track, it's what we can, we keep going, and so. It's a good target, and it just kind of wobbles its way through the future.
There may be elements of it that have shorter planning horizons, like the pros plant, because of grant eligibility with. What is now the Recreation Conservation Office, I think it's seven year planning horizon, so that might change depending on, you know, whether sewer water con plans that are referenced in our overall comprehensive plan, too.
It's true, and, uh, like our water and sewer comprehensive plans were adopted two years ago now, almost two years ago. Um, so they're on a slightly different timeframe, so all of these subcomponent plans, water, sewer, parks, transportation, all of these things, they're all adopted independently and then referenced. Into the comprehensive plan, and so they are all on their own timelines, depending on. Fundings and grant approvals and, and state approvals. We, we, we're not gonna go over the title of our water system plan again, just to get in the same cycle as this, because.
Yeah.
We don't want to touch that again. We can, we can pour water, we're good. Um, so, but yeah, the, the idea is, you know. Capital plans have to be six, ten, and twenty years for growth and their planning horizons. Yeah, it just, it's kind of all these overlapping numbers. That makes it more, more less confusing, sorry.
Okay, and this is how we decide where we're gonna spend our money on infrastructure in the future, where we're gonna run the new sewer line or, or water line. Upgrades.
I, I would say that, yes, as a, as a result of this, the, the land use sets the pattern and then the transportation utilities and then the bureaucracy, the capital facilities element, they set the budgetary. For the city, then in several years.
If you don't have it in here and we go to ask for a grant, we're gonna say, why isn't in your comp? Essentially, you need a million and a half gallon water tank.
Yeah, yeah, so, absolutely. You need to, you, you need to put the work in to, to justify the need, right? You just can't say you need it. It doesn't fly with the, with the funding entity, so you need to justify that need somehow. And that's through your comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
My question, we, we were supposed to identify a hundred acres in the last con plan of where we can build. Are there locations like that around, or should we not scare people about where we gotta go? I mean.
The, the con plan policies referring to is one of the, uh, one of the economic development policies said identify and protect a hundred acres of industrial, potentially for industrial something or something. I don't know if that was supposed to be.
I mean, there's.
Exactly. Yeah, this was something we actually talked about steering committee meeting today was we, there's all these policies and goals, but there's no like actions or necessarily like timelines or responsible parties or things like that. And so one of the things that I talked to the staff about today, my market consulting staff, is actually getting an action matrix at the end. You know, we're not just saying, oh, we want a happy, healthy community, or, oh, we want a happy, healthy community that's, you know, super walkable in the downtown. We want to like define what is walkability and then. Track that and see how we're doing over time. We want to say like, yeah, we did these five things and we improved our walkability by fifty percent, you know, something to that effect. So, um, you know, having those metrics can be really important going forward, so that's something that. Consultants knows we want, and we'll have an implementation chapter. Consultant knows we want and, um, we'll have an implementation chapter that. identifies a list of actions and who's responsible, what's the timeline for these, so, like, we don't wanna plan that just sits on a shelf and. Six, ten, twenty years later, we look back, like, what, what happened? Exactly, yeah, dust it off and. You know, forgotten, find that, people forgot about it, um, so hopefully it's something that, you know, whatever the city of Redmond, for example, um. On the long range planning team, one of the annual duties is to go back through the scorecard from the comprehensive plan. What was our fire response time? What's our, um, average housing price? What's our, uh, educational improvement? What's all these things? Even if we didn't have necessarily control over them, but like, how were we doing all these things? Did we make our community a better place? Was it because of the investments we made? Um, I, I think that scorecard is really important for transparency and stuff, so we're gonna try to get to that. Um, at the very least, I'll have an action matrix, we'll have a, a set list of things that like. Go forth, make a progress, so.
Measurable.
Any other questions?
I guess for public purpose, Jay has got a new item for us about multifamily taxes and.
Six hours of speaking role there, we're not, and, and not.
You're good, oh, hey, well. They're small.
So, previously referenced, now discussed, and, uh, multifamily property and property tax exemption, um, so. Uh, this is something that a lot of larger cities have undertaken, uh, Mesa County actually even has this in their code as well. Um, although the department said that during his entire time on the commission, didn't recall this. Um, I tried to find any instances that it makes. Um, but when I was in Redmond, for example, um, it was extensively, um, our longerish planning. We managed the affordable housing covenants and we built, well, we didn't build, but we managed, uh, thousands of, you know, affordability units, because Redmond was. Growing pretty rapidly at that time, and. As a result, um, you know, this is something, uh, where. Give you the short version, it'd be one of the bigger details, but it's, it's an eight or twelve year tax holiday, depending on levels of affordability. And it allows, it alleviates the developer of their city tax responsibility. Um, at a time when prices are going up, uh, or property taxes are going up or whatever, it's very advantageous for developers. To take advantage of this because they kind of like walk in and. Build into their pro forma that they don't have this property tax in one quarter, it's like a period of time. Uh, and in exchange, we request that they, uh, create some levels of affordability. So under Washington state law, um, there used to be a ten year, but that's been removed, but there, you can do eight years for any reason. And so some even rural places in Washington have the eight percent just to build something. Like, hey, we'll give you an eight year tax holiday if you just built something housing that doesn't even be affordable. Um, and put other conditions beyond that, the twelve year. That is mandatory for inclusionary and affordable housing and you can actually make that deeper levels of affordability in exchange for that twelve percent versus. So essentially, we're being asked to, you know, if we consider and adopt this sort of a, a program. We forego the property taxes for a defined period of time. But we get, uh, the affordability for the life of the project. So as long as that building exists, as long as that property exists, there is a covenant on it that deed restricts a certain number of those units be. Uh, rented, um, at a certain percentage of their income. And that's based on household.
How does, how does this help the developer? And, okay, the, the tax exemption is gonna benefit. The person living there, right?
Rental, rental units.
This is predominantly for rental units.
Yeah.
So the property owner would own the permits. So if he's not paying or she, um, paying for the improvement, adjust the land.
Well, I, I, I understand that, I just, I just thought that we're gonna, this was gonna be, we're gonna be talking about. Affordable housing as well. We tried this rental thing before and it didn't slide. Affordable housing, workforce housing.
Okay, yeah, this is just, this is just another, this is another measure, that's this, this deed restricts the property. So a percentage of the units in this apartment complex are held for, of the affordability level per. Statute the council considers.
So, so for example, and making up things, this is not actually happening, uh, somebody comes in, wants to build one hundred unit apartment building. Ten percent of those units are required to be rented, uh, you know, sixty percent of area needing income. Forever, um, as long as that building exists, that affordability covenant is on there, the city holds the covenant and transfer the covenant. Um, and is responsible for monitoring enforcement of the covenant, so there's a little bit of work that comes along with doing it because. Now, we wanna make sure they're actually renting to the people that they say they're renting to, there was a little bit of a scandal, if everybody remembers a few years ago of the D L U, there was. Some very wealthy individuals who were renting some, uh, fee restricted affordable units and they were. Abusing this.
That's been going on in New York for, for a hundred years.
Uh, but, but really trying to, to make sure that if, if they are in fact fee restricted or workforce housing, they are being. Um, so there's, there's a little bit of work in the auditing.
I just, I thought we were gonna do both, but we're just doing the one. I thought we were gonna do credits for. For low income houses too.
Oh, like, um. No, no, you, are you talking about a bonus lot or are you talking about, um?
You had said that we were gonna look at code for, um, like every tenth home has to be affordable.
Okay, so that is, that's a mandatory. Um, which you can adopt in coordination with this, um, that also makes it.
That was in my brain too.
Okay. Uh, I, I, I know when I came here before, I gave you guys a long, real list of things we could do, so, um, this is, yeah, this is just one limited piece of that pie. And this is just for this particular, uh, kind of thing, if, if we did this with, uh, a density bonus as well, I mean, it's just not more. Appetizing to the developer, um, but again, at this time where we're looking at, um, you know, creating a multifamily zone that has these increased densities. Um, I don't know that we need to necessarily do the mandatory inclusionary right now, if we were seeing. Um, you know, just unchecked growth right now, just people are building handily, but. Maybe tons of profit, why not, I mean, maybe we could consider the bonus unit plus mandatory inclusionary and then. You know, they're, they're getting given even more money, but we're also getting affordable housing. Um, given that we're not really seeing that turn in the market right now, uh. We can come back to that, I would love to see that adopted, um, I hope we end up in that position later where it was, it's really good for us. Um, but as of right now, this is a completely voluntary, um. Uh, item, um, and I mean, if we wanted to attach a bonus to the density just to this, we could consider it all as well. Um, thank you for taking on an active contract, also, here's your extra ten units, now you're building a hundred instead of a hundred and. You know. Affordable or something to that effect, so I mean, council could consider that, um. So, uh, I'll just kinda walk you through it real quick, um, again, like I mentioned, um. Well, I didn't mention the state law part, so this is all, we're allowed to do this under state law, um, under eighty two twelve, uh. Anyway, we're, we're allowed to do this under state law. Um, there are a, a couple of requirements under state law, um, and they. Kind of are reflected here in the purpose and that's, um, you have to identify that there is a residential targeted area. In an urban area, um, that is desirable for a house, so. We have to identify a specific part of the city that this could be, can't just say, oh, citywide, everybody go to town, we have to say, we want to identify a specific area.
Yes, could be just one area or can we specify different areas?
We can have multiple areas, so I have currently proposed two, um, but we could even go for a third one and if you wanted a third one, I have an idea where to go. Anyway, uh, so I propose two to start with, um, and if you go to page, uh. Just really rudimentary maps on page seven. Um, proposing one for downtown, um, kind of following the boundaries of what we think of downtown, kind of in the. In the bowl, you know, not up on the hillside, right, so down on the, the River Valley, Black Plain area that is shoulder. Um, so that's the downtown residential targeted area, um, and then. Up on top of the hill, uh, kinda like I said before, out by, um, Walmart and the Wallisian Boulevard, kind of everything from. About K Street in the north, um, and then across the highway into the Hollywood's property, that would be. Just what I'm typing, temporarily calling it Blue Slate, um, residential target area, you guys can come up with something better if you want, um. Any of these names, um, maybe the north, it'd be up town, it'd be. Name it after somebody, up your favorite, I don't care, um, but. W- we don't have to, there's no criteria of like, you name it, it just has to be defined, that way we can, um. If there are differences, um, because for example, city of Redmond has three different areas, there's one in Overlake. There's one in Marymore Village and there's one downtown. And the Marymore Village one has different levels of affordability. Than the Overlake, the Overlake one is immediately adjacent to Microsoft campus, they have different needs for affordability than the new Marymore Village. Which is where they wanted to put a lot more like the workforce housing, you know, people and families and larger family sized units closer to the park. Um, and so they're, um, slowly turning that kind of industrial area, if you know, Redmond at all, kind of where blazing bagels. Whatnot, um, that all is gonna become a big kind of South Lake Union kind of thing, immediately adjacent park and it'll be great for families, that kind of thing, so they, they were. They have the three different ones they need.
Well, I, I definitely think that number three should be the city property up there by. Shell Springs Road. Off there by the Island Lake Road. That should definitely be one of the locations on here.
Across from Springfield.
Yep.
It's a, it's a potential. Um, another one that I had been thinking on was with all of the development, um, that's proposed up on, uh, Peacock Ridge. We've already got the hundred ninety nine, uh, that, you know, it's under construction, well, they're under construction for the civil improvements right now. Um, we have, uh, three hundred and two, you know, uh, second phases, if you will, um, that they've pre-subbed and are, are. Starting to work with us on there and then eventually they're building out all the way to John's Prairie, that's. Maybe several thousand units, and so if we were to designate one of those as a residential targeted area as well, um, then. You know, it would, you know, probably give the developer more incentive to do some, they are proposing multifamily in one of their leader phases of development up there. Um, and so that could help them and potentially help get more workforce housing as a result.
There's also tax credits, so, oh, it goes along with projects like that too. The last project that we were gonna do up there by the Shell Springs was. That sixty five million dollar. Project was gonna be, they were all, they were under tax credits also, so I mean, there's more than just the city.
Federal tax credits?
Given, yeah, there's, the city giving us free property tax for seven or ten years, there's also federal tax credit, so I mean, it's. Hopefully we can market that and get some affordable workforce or. I don't get it, oh, workforce or.
I mean, it's, and under M F T E, it's, it's, it's affordable housing, it's what it's called, yeah. Jay, talk about under, underlying zoning, so some of these, some of these areas have underlying, right? Land use designations and zoning and how that might apply, just because it's a. Apartment complex, or an M F T zone, doesn't necessarily mean that. It just, it's cookie cutter, right? It's not a cookie cutter, just a, you know, multifamily in, in an underlying zone.
So, so part of it is that the area around Wallace Stealin right now is part of the comp plan, um, we're proposing a change different, it's kind of a mesh match of. Uh, just general commercial, which is our, our only commercial side, um, and, uh. There's a little bit of residential, but it's mostly like, it's mostly like, you know, the one that gave me Plaza. Couple of the, you know, drive through businesses moving up Olympic Highway and then, and the things along Wallace Stealin, and so. Um, that whole area will become regional retail, which would allow for the big box stores, but also apartments and also those kinds of things. So that underlying zoning would, would allow for some of this stuff to happen, and then the other things that are across the highway where. Um, and the Hollywood's had the zoning changes, the C R G and all those, uh, the other designations over there. Um, that would also change and allow for kind of more dense. Kind of the, the, the biggest buildings that you're gonna see at Shell are gonna be in this new regional retail zone. Um, you know, up in a place where it's, you know, easily supported, good land, that's a good freeway access, access to schools, things like that, it makes the most sense down back road up there. The one major inhibitor of good. Development up there though is just the existence of power lines, cuts right through the middle of everything, picks up a lot of value. You know, unsightly, you have. Uh, induction distances, again, away from them, things like that, so there, there's a little bit of things that we need to work with, but. Um, by and large, it's still the best place in town to put the dense large development, um. And the, so most of the zone will be covered by that, but even in the neighborhood residential zone, I mean, they could still. Build these, but they would have to follow, um. The, the PUD process and to build the apartment complexes, except in the areas, like, like I said, or you're, those are.
So in these zones that we're proposing, these would be the only ones that, um, this. Tax cut would be eligible for?
Uh, within these two residential targeted areas, yes, that, those are the only places you can put the tax credit, that, that this, this state. Has a bunch of restrictions, uh, set up in eighty four dot fourteen of the R C W that like describes. It has to be an urban area, it has to be suitable for residential growth, it has to be, uh. Can't remember all the criteria off the top of my head, there's three main ones, then there's some other like clarifying criteria under that, but generally speaking. They want it to be a compact urban center, they don't want it to just be like, hey, it's our whole town. Go hog, they, they, they want it to be like a, a good growth, uh, inducing tool, um, like smart growth. Yeah.
If we look at, um, maybe like Boulevard, there's some open space out there that I think could potentially be. A good room for growth or maybe in the Capitol Hill area. Those have been considered, I, I don't know.
Lake Boulevard, is that what you remember?
I'm going up the hill there, there's, there's room for growth. Um, and, you know, there is an element of school nearby. Um, eventually, that could potentially be an on and off ramp on the highway right there.
Oh, right.
You know what I mean, that, that's really easy growth right there, and granted, that's way down the road, but, um. I could see that area. Might be. This might be great in that area, and I don't, I don't know how hard it would be to do in the Capitol Hill area. But I see there could be growth, especially with the new neighborhood that's coming in. You know, cause it's just on the backside of it.
Capitol Hill is tricky, we've been trying to figure out the traffic. Even, even just with the existing platted lots that are up there, those are gonna cause some, I mean, they're already platted, we can't do anything about it, that's gonna cause. Pretty significant traffic impacts up there, I don't know how we would, I mean, it's not saying it can't be done, uh, I mean, with enough money and enough. Willpower, you can make anything happen, um.
But there's space there.
There's space, uh, but, a, a, a lot of the empty lots up on Capitol Hill are programmed right now, they're, they're under development by a developer. Um, they're, they, they don't have to go through a subdivision process, it's already been platted. Um, and so there's eighty lots up there that are gonna become single family homes within the next year, um, so. I think a lot of the extra space there, unless you get outside of city limits, kind of going further back, like follow, what is it, Walnut, like out, out way. Um, uh, maybe that direction, um, but then we start getting a little bit further away from kind of urban area that they want. Um, so, and then, you know, there's just, there's a lot of it on Capitol Hill. Like Redmond is a, a city of sixty five thousand people, just has the three districts, so.
That helps me understand.
And particularly with affordable housing, you wanna locate those close to services, because those are typically people that are getting used. Uh, public transportation or, or, um, or pedestrian facilities, and that's why specifically downtown core, um, I think. Jay, specifically downtown, right, that, so we have our downtown, you know, zoning designation, that's C R V, Commercial Residential Valley outside that. Right now, in the downtown core, just like general commercial, um, first floor has to be commercial, commercial use, that would stay in effect. So the downtown core, if, if an apartment complex built under this, you'd actually have some. Commercial, um, facilities underneath and then residential on top and that just builds to. The livability and the services that are being provided.
At, at the end of the day though, it's up to council, I mean, you guys can say that if you decide that Capitol Hill is, is a place that you want and you can designate it, make the finding, it's a. Urban center and residential targeted area and, um, it is the. The test you guys can have, I mean, I don't, I don't see anything in state laws. Well, but you can't have your whole city in one of them, I know that. And it's compact and I'm pretty sure, you know, like. Maybe. Want to make sure we're not running a foul. But to, those things aside, um, Capitol Hill does have a lot of pedestrian access issues, uh, and if we're looking at workforce housing. Densification, I mean, people, it's, it's the block up there, it's gonna be failing intersections, so we try to do too much up there. It's not impossible, but, um, the one down at the end of Lakes. Um, actually, we were, we've been looking at that, there's a proposal for some additional single family homes out in that area right now, which is gonna kind of. Uh unless we go really far out, like where we're going along, like out that direction. Um but yeah, there's there's a bunch of stuff in the pipeline. I think I know what you're thinking, because um seriously, actually identifying. That as a node for maybe like an excuse development, family that just got the pre-sub in for forty three single family home, like. But we want single family homes, I'm not saying we don't, but we had, we had done a lot of work on like trying to identify where the appropriate like high density nodes would go, now it's gonna be one of them. Uh the developer has different plans, and you know what, we welcome everybody right now, but um.
Thank you.
So my suggestion would be like, if we did want to put it, put it out Peacock, um although a lot of. Help and a lot of it's gonna be single family, um which is. Okay, um so why we would want to do it, um there's a lot of benefits of this, not only to bring more people to our community, not. To provide affordable housing for the people who are working, living here, um but also. We're gonna see increased uh water sewer bills, we're gonna see uh, oh, increase in the bill, but we increased our revenue budget. Um general facilities charge, it's permitting fees, all these other things that come along with the growth. We capture that as ancillary, so whereas we may be passing over some of the property tax, and again, it's only our portion of property tax, we can't relieve. The library or the schools or anything down, you know, remove our portion of property tax, but it's, you know. What we're getting in exchange for that is both sales tax, bribery, people who kind of work in our stores or businesses and things like that, so the. It's a trade-off, um and it also does, you know, if we're wildly successful, it becomes a lot of advantage. Um I mean, there's an entire agency managing the portfolio of uh these affordable contracts on the side of the calendar. I'm never that big, but you know, at some point, there will probably. Hopefully, at that point, we've earned enough revenue to justify that. Um that's kind of the caveat, again, it's it's kind of weighing, um you know, we're we're getting this tax holiday. In exchange for these other benefits and this isn't a council decision, it's worth, you know, years of. Potentially quite a large sum of property taxes in exchange of these other benefits that are rising, and then. Be restricted in perpetuity for the house, which, and this is, you know, sixty to eighty percent A M I. Typically. Forty three, and so. For that sixty thousand, that's pretty reasonable, we're not talking, you know, homeless supportive services, we're not talking kind of lowest of the low, we're not housing. Other methods for that, this is, this is people who are working in our businesses.
Commerce dot law dot go, website on. Didn't mention twenty year exemption, but it also. Twenty, at least twenty percent of the houses must be below A M I. We're only proposing ten percent currently, we're physically wasn't here. But I also heard that it might that might have run out in two thousand twenty one, fifteen, fourteen, nineteen, more, and bring that back up. And that's centered right now, so I was. See, wondering whether their taxes exemptions can be extended for twenty years, but also include. The for the budget included of that, more percentage of that housing below their A M I.
Must be located within one mile of high capacity transfer, at least fifteen minutes scheduled frequency in a city that's implemented. Yeah, mandatory inclusionary zoning requirement, so that's the twenty, there's some other stickers there.
In the eight year says specific um to multifamily, or if you go down, it doesn't say that to the. On the twenty years, or if you read further, yeah. Oh, just that it specifies on the eight-year multifamily, but then as it talks about the twelve. It just says development of affordable housing, it doesn't say multifamily specific, so that might be a difference, I guess, between those two things.
What I would say is kind of what Mark was just talking about, the 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 criteria there about high capacity transit board, or we don't have anything that looks that. Definition here, we don't have bus rather transit, the light rail or heavy rail or a ferry or anything that's been glorified into the high capacity transit, um. I will say, I'm not really sure, nothing. Yeah, you get commuter trains to. But I mean. Uh other questions, discussion, happy to just read more at this point.
I mean, I I I think it's great, I think it's not enough to attract. Anybody to build multifamily, I don't know if we could do anything more with permits or. Or uh something like that, if we if we could get property, we could do, we could pay advance for what is the E I S or the C P R or whatever and. Identify places they could build, maybe that's same, I don't think it's enough to attract them to come build here.
I think it's a good start.
I think it's a start, but I think we need to add something, add to it to try to attract them to to actually do it, we have, like you said, we haven't built a multifamily. In since nineteen, what, seventy or something?
Nearly two thousand.
I think Jason said it was seventy or eighty years.
Yeah, I I will agree with you, I mean, this is not a fancy, this is not gonna solve our problem. Um at all, but this is, this is one arrow in the quiver, and you know, when I, when I came to you guys, you know, last summer and. Had, you know, this like list of different options, this is, you know, the first stab at what we can start working.
Well, I I mean, it's it's great, I just think that if we want to attract somebody, we need sweetness a little bit more.
I think that's a really good start.
Um I I agree, it's a good start, I'm just saying, I think that we need to add to it, that we need to possibly get in there that. Attracts him to even build, I mean, this is gonna save him when the property's all, when it's all done, they're gonna save a thousand dollars per per unit maybe or. Apartment complex, actually, I don't know what the taxes are on apartments, but I average house for the city is about a thousand bucks a month at four hundred thousand bucks, so.
It it would be really easy kind of tying into this, I mean, to to. Pair up with the work that I've done here, to as the ordinance gets adopted, to have a section within your zoning code. Um that says, you know, in the residential sections or something to this effect, I'll like. Everybody had more time to think about it, but um something that's, you know, there's a density bonus of ten percent or twenty percent or whatever over base density. In there for properties um with qualified contracts under chapter three dot forty eight. And then boom, that like sweetens the deal for somebody to take on the multifamily tax exemption and gives them this additional bonus, you know, kind of. Concept, so I mean, there's there's things we can do where they work in tandem together, um. This was step one, and then we can, I mean, we can add that in, it's like step one, and you along with this, go through, or it can go as a larger. Um inclusionary um. Kind of package later where we're looking, you know, across all different housing types at. So in in Redmond, I don't like to talk about Redmond, but I, that's where I did most of the housing that I've done in my career, um I mean, they they require the. Very affordable for all of their projects, I mean, that we're getting affordable power home before the single family home affordable, all kinds of things, um and. Uh even the the trilogy uh development has a huge number of single family. Uh deed restricted homes, and and those are already indeed restricted because they're over fifty five. Um so like, deed restriction upon deed restriction, but I mean, it made it very affordable to a certain segment of the population that we're not able to afford a single family home. Otherwise, so I agree, it all works together, this is one of a larger couple, I mean, any. Bring back P values and giving you more alternatives and solutions. You know, somebody puts all of these things together, you know, the bonuses and the tax exemption and the, you know, the new up. You know, increases in the zoning, the, you know, new changes that we just made to our land use matrix, the removal of our height limit, I mean, eventually it becomes compelling for somebody um. To to start building this, um a key is gonna be unlocking some of the properties that have been held up very long time.
I mean, I don't wanna give away the form, I just want to make it worth their while, because, you know, like soon, you get the, you get this credit. After a place built and, you know, they gotta rent them and all that stuff, I mean, what what's enticing them to actually um and and build it? You know, like.
The property property becomes more valuable without the property tax, that's one thing, right, because the post former is gonna say, we we've got this debt service on this. A forty unit apartment complex over the next thirty years, well, that debt service is reduced because you can reduce the property taxes for eight or twelve years. Oh, that that's your benefit, I think what we have to talk about is what kind of resources we have available to us, and what tools are in our pocket right now. With diminishing um general fund capabilities, what tools are available to us to put something out there? To attract some development, great, let's look at all our opportunities, Jay's put a great list together for us, I think we. Start checking those off the list by bringing to the, bringing those to you over time and enticing people. To come and invest in our community, developers come invest in our community and create more housing at the same time.
Sean said, I think it's a good start, that uh. That that's what they're doing, they're bringing us different things as they come, because like you said, we went over a list of these things previously, so we know what we're getting ourselves towards. And this is definitely a great start, very pleasing, and I like the way it looks.
Just wanna clarify, if I understand, um it seems like when we talked about the arts day earlier, it streamlined a little bit of the process for getting these projects approved in general. Uh not necessarily affordable, but just multifamily housing. Uh and took them out of the P U D process, so they don't have to go through all the public hearings, or did I misinterpret that?
No, 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 sorry, okay, so there's a rezone that's going to occur with the future land use now, so right now, we have one. By and large, one residential, general residential. We're going to be splitting that so that there's a multifamily designated zone, where you can just build by right, and that's where. Instead of having to go through the P U D process and public hearings and everything, if you need the development standards, if you need the code, it's just like building a single family house, and then you give your permit or die, like there's. We take away the the the.
Go ahead, I was gonna ask if it overlays, the R T A and the M F T E zone, the R T A and multifamily zones may overlay them.
Yes, there will be, there will be areas where multifamily, and as I mentioned, the general commercial is also getting split, right, we have one commercial zone in the city. That fits Walmart, fits a tiny little coffee stand on First Street, right, like that that's the same zoning standard, same parking requirements, same everything. Big and little, and that that doesn't really work for our community, you know, when we got. Trying to try to make these things work, so we're, we're gonna have the regional retail, and as part of the regional retail, you know, yes, we'll still allow for the hitbox store, we'll still allow for, you know. The chain restaurants and things like that, but we're also going to incentivize, you know, building stuff on top of it, you know, I mean, six acres of empty roof. We built something on top of it, they're building really incredible, there's urban targets, there's urban Whole Foods, there's urban. Um all all kinds of models where they just put the housing on top, cost of housing and employee housing on one of their stores, um you know, so let's encourage. Going up, so you know, we we get the benefits of the credit without having to sprawl out and get traffic worse.
And utilities.
Yeah, and it makes, you know, the investments that these, they build, you know, these these companies are. Buying, you know, they keep these property, they're building a new store and. It's kind of wasted airspace, wasted parking, wasted everything, let's let's help them, you know, better utilize their assets as well, so it's. It's a great economic developer tool, um so yeah, it's this, the things I'm talking about, they they all kind of work in tandem. Really apologize if we start like blending them together and I I get excited about this stuff, but um the idea is, yes, there's these these two separations for zoning, so. General commercial and regional retail, neighborhood residential and multifamily, those will create a zone where we can build denser multifamily units. And allow for this kind of thing. Those will be by and large located in these residential targets, so there's gonna be a few places where the multifamily zone occurs, for example, um. The Fairmont Co Apartments, um a couple of these other places that come where they're already in the apartment complex. There's only multifamily, right now, if they wanted to expand, they have to go back through the process, they have to go back through it. But we're hearing, it's a lot of work for them, whereas if, I mean, there, it's already an apartment building, but. Why would you have to like basically get them, so we wanna accommodate those, and so there, there will be some scattered throughout the city, but by and large, we're trying to push these into. Areas where it makes sense to coalesce them into these residential targeted areas.
I I guess the hope was with that, if we're identifying those and we're we're. Breaking down the barriers that people are currently facing, and then we're providing this on top to say, hey, maybe you could also do this, it puts together a package where they can get funding. From other existing programs like bond cap allocation, most of that goes to affordable housing these days, um you know, and with interest rates going up, it makes, it's. Even more interesting for them, so if they can put together that package and they don't have a public hearing to go through, right, they're a lot more likely to get that, so. Hopefully, that can be part of the answer, if we can't find anything else, but if we can find.
Might not be the answer, the final answer, but it's a piece of the puzzle, right, might get them there. And you know, and that might be why they're not even looking here right now, we've seen the growth in downtown Olympia, it might be more, you know, at least for me. Um and it's identifiable, and a lot of that has done. He's a downtown, and that was on the first floor and residential.
And I I like the scale in Olympia, I think that's hopefully what we'll see here, is you know, the three to five story type of development, not necessarily. You know, the eight or nine, you know, maybe you'll see in South Lake, I mean, if it happens, it happens, we took away the height limit, but um I, you know, I still have the hope that we'll see a little bit more. You know, compatible residential scale, but at the point, it's still my story.
To the moon.
We said yes, we said yes, so.
Um so I'm in favor of the residential target areas and also the multifamily plans exemptions. Also want us to look at community land trusts, and I know we have a couple examples already locally. Um this is about making low income and senior living more affordable and kind of uh insulating them from land prices up and down. By just paying what that what's on top of the land and not the land itself. Um I I know we don't wanna get into rent control, but something like this would really help uh Christmas Village, I think, um. If if those people that live there also um didn't own the land, but the land trust owned it, they only had to work on or. Focus on what they had on their own property, what they were living in, it it's self um. Almost self-regulating, and you'd wanna keep that property really nice, because then you could sell it at that price. Um above beyond what the the land cost, so um that's your only incentive, but if you let it. You're a renter, you're gonna run to the ground, but if you're living in it and you wanna look at in the future, then you wanna keep your existing. Property really nice, so it's almost self-regulating in a way, so. I think that we could look at, I mean, land trust is a model, I know that he's again Maui after all the fires. Um and it's, I think it's the equitable way to look at, um how do we have. Real cost housing in the future, that's insulated from the single landlord raising rents whenever they want to. So I was wondering if we can look into that in the future study session.
We can explore that, um I I will caution, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying no, um obviously, I'll I'll bring forward something that's a little counsel for sure, um. It requires seed, you've gotta have funding, land, a bunch of things that you can put into the kitty as a city. Nonprofits do it much more efficiently and much more effectively, um I went to actually just, I was at the. Uh American Planning Association's National Planning Conference last week, we went to a session on land trusts, and I mean, it's a very interesting model. Uh not a lot of cities specifically are doing them, there's a lot of nonprofits that are undertaking, they have a different. Way of raising funds, being capital, they don't have them the same restrictions that a city, a municipal entity, a governmental entity has, but. Um that's not to say that there aren't communities that don't do it, um it's it's an, it requires an initial investment that will land or. Pretty substantial fundraising, um some cities have started, the one that I saw that they started with three homes and are now to. Several hundred, I don't remember how many exactly, but they started just with the three, um so it can't happen, but I mean, we would need three homes to start with.
There's already example, like one of the parks, trailer parks around here is that, so.
As a nonprofit.
Yeah, um yeah, the the though. If the trailer parks do a co-op program, where they actually, the land over the the. The owners of the residences purchase the land underneath in cooperative, yeah, those are super effective, they're a great way to help people stay in their homes and. Continue to maintain those investments.
We had seniors who were like, well, maybe I can fund this for the worst market or something.
Yeah, Mayor Nisco and I attended a meeting in Christmas Village. It's two years ago now, I think, before the sale, and that was an opportunity that was presented, and they had a member from a, I don't know what state agency and. I think. Representative Griffey. Courteur was there, I I believe, and so those options were presented, and we tried to help them uh do that process and. Provide some assistance, I don't think the residents. They they decided not to move in that direction at that point, yeah.
Right, we, so we started like three people that wanted to join a land trust and we gave. Generate something, so we must call it, we're people, let's go. Anyway, thank you, thank you for considering.
Yeah, I I again, I'm I'm happy to bring that forward, I just need to kind of understand, like, what would council like to say next after this, like, um. You know, I brought you a list last time, and I can send you the list again, just, you know, let's start taking these things off, that's a great one, um. There's, you know, the mandatory inclusionary, there's um a couple of other things, um you know, we talked about, um. And one of the things I had suggested in that long list of things was um pre the approved E U lines, you know, that somebody can literally just gonna say. Like a model three in my backyard, so. But all of these things cost money, or all of these things, I mean, the, some of these. Even this has a cost, you know, it gets us a benefit, um the mandatory inclusionary, there's the possibility that you could actually. Even this has a cost, you know, it gets us benefit. Um, the mandatory inclusionary, there's the possibility that you could actually push developers away. It doesn't leave their portfolio in times of decreasing property values. Mandatory inclusionary is, is a turnoff. Um, and so, even though it gets us more affordable housing, it could. You know, somebody could look at their performance and say, it just doesn't work. I think right now, we're at a, we're at a tipping point where we're just starting to see the growth. Say, no, again, we'll owe the council to adopt, but. Um, I'd be concerned that, you know, as, as some of these developments are just now starting to cancel where we're seeing the interest, if we did something like that, we could. Kick off the ones that are in the pipeline. So, uh, without, the, the ones that are vested, we would say, but the ones that weren't vested. Um, but I, again, I could bring you back to the list of future study sessions, like prioritize. I know last time I just gave you a list and dumped a bunch of stuff on your lap. But maybe, maybe it'd be a good idea to bring back and say, all right, we're going to go in this order, or, you know. Mandatory inclusionary, community land trust, uh, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Does that, does that sound like? Sorry, Mark, I'm kind of getting a bit of a DRC.
Not at all. No, I thi- I think let's revive that list. We can talk about it in some briefings and then uh make sure we. So you can see it again before you come in here tonight, and then, uh, yeah, we're happy to stay. Yeah.
I don't hear anybody saying they don't want that.
So, but not just this, but more.
Keep it going. Um, is there anything else regarding, go back to the MMT specifically here, um, and this proposed ordinance, which is very similar to the ordinance we have. For you guys, um. Any other questions?
Clarifications, so a hundred unit apartment, half of them have to be, be affordable? No, or no, because it says, says on B and C, they both. I'm confused, so, so at least fifty percent of the space such as residential structure is mixed use development for permanent. Residential occupancy, and then there's C says a minimum of ten dwelling units must be created. So I'm kind of on what or.
Are you looking at the RCW or are you looking at?
Looking at three point three eight dot zero six zero.
Zero six zero?
Yeah, PG.
And minimum of ten new, C is a minimum of ten new dwelling units must be created.
Yeah, so B says fifty percent of the space, so is that talking about downtown like on railroad?
So, so this is saying fifty percent within the structure must be intended for permanent residential occupancy, so. Um, there are mixed use buildings where there's a hotel and apartments in the same building, or there's. Um, amenity space or uh existing, you know, like your clubhouse and all those kinds of things for the people who are living there. Or there's commercial space inside the building, I know, or, you know, some businesses on the first and second floors, there's. Basically, they're saying fifty percent of the space within the structure, so if it's.
Yeah.
The residential structure or mixed use, so commercial and residential must be permanent residential occupancy, can't be transient, it can't be air and be. Can't be a hotel, can't be anything that's not apartment dwellings essentially. So that's, that is one criteria, and then the next one is a minimum of ten new has to be created. And that is mostly just because of math, if we're saying ten percent needs to be affordable, how do you have ten percent of eight? And it gets very confusing, so it's just easier if you say if you're building ten or more. Um, the only way to mess with that would be if you change the thresholds, if you went to like. Twenty-five percent of eight units or something like where you're getting one.
Yeah, so, so out of a hundred unit apartment, ten, only ten has to be affordable, and they get a tax credit for all hundred?
For the valuation of the entire structure.
Correct. Early to twelve years, depending on your political.
Yeah, that because the, the owner's taxes are based on the structure, not, yeah, not individual, so. New picture.
And if you look down on page, I think it's. Thirteen, there's just a little matrix, three point three eight one two O that says the length of the exemption, the number of units, and then the affordability level.
So the, the proposal was for both of the residential target areas that the eight years is ten percent at EMI. So again, both family afford, about a hundred thousand dollars for AMI for a family afford in Mason County. That would mean. Ten percent of those units are at somebody making eighty thousand dollars a year for their family. Which per HUD regulations is thirty percent of that, so you can basically kind of block the knockback and come up with what the monthly rent is going to be, and developers look at that and go. Can I make a profit on this or not? Well, I'm a factor in the property taxes, well, I'm a factor in the other units, well, I'm a factor, and then they come with included. The twelve year exemption is that first ten percent at EMI, and then the second ten percent is at sixty, so again, family of four or sixty thousand. Um, so that would be what the.
So it makes it worth. They get more years tax credit if they build more.
Or affordable.
Yeah.
And as.
Deportability, deeper cut.
Got it, okay.
They still need head vouchers to qualify for these, or this is just up there? I don't, I don't know a person that.
No, this is, this is at any level of affordability, um, for the fair housing act, you're not supposed to be able to discriminate against anybody's source of income, whether it's voucher, whether it's cash. Or whether it's anything, so, um, if these people could be, honestly, at these levels of affordability, we're, we're probably not talking about head vouchers. I mean, really, that's, I mean, market rent really for, for these kinds of values, like by the time we start getting the HUD levels, we're down to like thirty percent. Like the very low income kinds of things, which again, I mean, again. It, it gets hard to do this, it's kind of a creep max, but there's other tools that we could look at later, which would center on the development. We're talking like hundred percent density bonuses and things like that to get that level of affordability.
Okay.
Um, one of the other things, just kind of going on to the HUD object a quick, uh, was that at the conference, um, there's a lot of cities that are adopting their own. Um, what's called source of income anti-discrimination, so basically. It's a law on the city books that says you as a landlord cannot discriminate against the source of income, whether that's alimony or. Uh, you know, uh, the child support or HUD vouchers or anything. Can't discriminate against your renters based on that. Um, and so a lot of cities are taking it on because. We don't necessarily have the power to enforce federal law with the fair housing act, it's not our charging responsibility. But cities are undertaking that themselves. If they have a housing program and a housing office, they're saying, no, we're going to take that off, we're going to be the enforcer. If somebody says. You know, I went to rent, I told them I had a HUD voucher, and they told me to get lost, the city can step in civil and say, yo, you can't do that, that's. Against our rules, and so.
Have to do that though.
We don't currently have staff to do that, um, but you know, in, in the future, I mean, if we end up with a housing staff event. That's what they could be in charge of doing is. The source of the condition, because it, it's a big problem, um, for people who are trying to be alternative sources of. So even though it's federally, where you, you know, a twenty year old kid with, you know, a family and. You know, one.
Six years.
Yeah, I mean, a, a lot of people don't know, like, that's an option. So the, the cities have their own housing office and standing up for their residents. It's, I, it's been really effective in making sure that these sources of housing are. I mean, they still have to follow by, they still have to have. Just saying, you can't say, well, I don't like where that.
Another off, off the wall question, so what about where tenants have to make three times the rent? To, to qualify for apartments, I mean, are, is that, are there cities across the state or country that? Regulate that, so it's not, because it used to be, you know, less than, I think it was twice, and then.
Just depends on the owner and the agency. They've all been different over the years, three, three times came very standard. But, mm, yeah.
Nowadays, at a fifteen dollar apartment or a house, it's, you gotta make six thousand dollars a month if you don't qualify.
You're talking about a proof of income essentially.
Yeah, yeah, and it just honestly, it just depends on the owner.
And that also has to do with credit. If your credit score is bad, then you got to make more money, and if your credit score is good, then you can make less money, so that was usually how that.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. I just meant that some, a lot of these places now, you gotta make three, three times the amount of the rent, so if rent's fifteen hundred bucks, you.
But more often than not, if you have bad credit, you got to make three times the rent, but if you don't have bad credit, they'll make, you know, adjustments as usual.
HUD's HUD standard is the three times.
Is it? Wow.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's pretty much what everybody local does anymore, because not, not because it's a law, but it just is what, yeah, that's what it can do.
That's interesting. I, I would have thought that wasn't, that wasn't the case, and I, so at first I Walmart that could afford to. By themselves, obviously, but. That's an absolute problem we're dealing with, right?
Yeah, so it's interesting.
All up and down the coast too, though.
But if we, if we mandate changes to that, that becomes like a rent patrol kind of issue.
No, no, I'm suggesting with July is meant to qualify to live in a place you, that require you like to. See now, but I, I didn't know that was HUD. Pretty wild. All right, anything else for Jay or Mark?
Well, this is great, thank you.
Um, I'll work on polishing this up. I think there was, um. The only thing that I really needed from council, um, there, uh, it says the owner shall pay to the city an initial application fee established by the resolution, so. Just, we would have to have a fee in our fee schedule for the application, or we could have. The fee if you wanted, no fee, I, that, that was the one, I think, I think I highlighted here, other than the name, it was like, um, for. Input for you guys, are you okay with, it was like, do you want something a different?
We know what you're talking about, we say it, that helps us.
Was I going to call it the Walmart RTA?
I, I'm not sure it's, it's the best name, because it's a lot of people are still upset about new slate.
The connotation.
Yeah.
It's be North Sheldon, or we can ball us Neil, or we, there, there could be some, three weeks ago, under ten hundred meeting, get it.
Gave me a hard time about this.
Okay, so we could, we could come up with a different name. I'm, I'm happy for that. Is there any suggestions that people like? Olympic something, we'll find something.
Anderson, because it's really close to that. Anderson Heights, maybe.
Gotta be lights for view.
There you go.
We'll, we'll come up with a few ideas that. Over at the wall, see what you think.
Okay.
Uh, and then the fee, do we want a fee for this? I mean, if the idea is we're trying to get affordable housing, do we need to charge a fee? In some, I mean, we do want to do cost recovery, meaning it's staff time and effort to do this, but also if we're trying to.
I think cost recovery is fair.
Okay, so estimated staff time for work and.
Brand something, but, much like we do with the subdivision or preliminary flat or some of those.
Those end up being, I mean, for these, I mean, it's an intensive case, there's a lot of work and then there's monitoring with it, so. I think those are the only two things, we'll come up with a different gutter.
And as Jay mentioned, there's certainly the, the permitting fees that are, that are attached to it as well.
And then usually there's an annual report where, you know, just staff delivers to council, you know, hey, it's seven minutes, we created. You know, kind of the benefits and whatnot. Um, you don't have to have that section, it's in the system, um, and then, you know, just the date. Like the date, if you guys are buying, the date that I have to report is. Specifically the, the things I need your input on, I will polish this up and bring it back.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
We've been wanting.
The council have any new items to discuss? All right. This session is adjourned at seven twenty-three.